Good evening and welcome to the regular commission meeting of May twentieth, two thousand twenty five. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Now if we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Good evening. Commissioner Masquez?
Here.
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Sazan?
Here.
Mayor Doctor?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Approval of regular and workshop agendas. Does anybody have anything? Okay, so we we did cancel tonight's workshop agenda. That basically was where we were going to to be going with that was an update of all of the current activity up there. We will be doing a workshop, but it will be on a standalone evening, so that we will have plenty of time to to go over all of the work that's being done out there and and as well, all of the the work that we would anticipate may take place for our twenty twenty six budget. So that's that's what we're going to do tonight. So that will not be on the agenda. No, you do not. Oh, I'm sorry for the minutes. Absolutely, but we're still at the approval. Is the next thing minutes?
Okay.
No, we're going to have the next is that we're going to have a
I'm sorry.
A a presentation given to us by the visitor hospitality industry presented by Visit St. Pete Clearwater.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. Joan Goodrich from your Office of Economic Development here to just introduce our presenter tonight. Visitor, our visitor hospitality industry is our legacy industry, our number one industry here in Treasure Island. Partnerships matter as we build our community, and this particular partnership matters as we continue to strengthen our local economy. We've had a stellar partnership with Visit St. Pete Clearwater, who serves as the county's tourism destination marketing organization. We've been fortunate that we have one of our very own, Clyde Smith from the Billmar, who also serves on Pinellas County's Tourist Development Council to make sure that our voice is raised from Treasure Island as we do this important work to continue to strengthen this industry. Brian Lowak, I'm so proud that he accepted our invitation to join us, in particular, in the month of May, as we celebrate tourism and travel across the industry across the country. Brian's been our president and CEO of Visit St. Pete Clearwater since the middle of two thousand and twenty-three. He's no stranger to Pinellas County. He's been born and raised here. He's done his whole professional career here with the Board of County Commissioners, with county administration. Now he leads our team with Visit St. Pete Clearwater. So we want to thank Brian and your team for the extraordinary partnership that we've had with you here on Treasure Island, as you've supported our signature events and renovations, as you continue to support our recovery, and in particular, as we stand up our economic development function here on the island. His team has been enormously beneficial as we look at data statistics and all of those things that will drive our economic development program forward. So again, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Brian Lowak.
Good evening, Mayor Doctor, Commission. Good to see you, Chief, and thank you for having me this evening. As Joan said, it's all about partnerships with us. I have the privilege of having the best job in the world. I get to brag, not only throughout the country, but around the world, about my hometown, the place that we call home, but we do it in partnership with our communities. And I want to give a shout out to Joan. I think when she came on, within a couple of weeks of her being on the job, she reached out to me. We met, and we continue to talk about how we can better collaborate and grow that partnership. Before I start, I do want to give a shout out also to Oliver Kugler, who's with us tonight. Oliver oversees all of our community engagement, so you may see him at a Rotary Club, a Chamber of Commerce, other community meetings, talking about the value of tourism and how we partner. So who are we? And before I get started, as Joan alluded to, I've been with the organization now for just under two years and with the county, Pinellas County Government, for almost thirteen years. And I had in my head of, hey, these guys over here at Visit St. Pete Clearwater, they take out some ads and they tell people the beaches are open, and we just sit back and wait for people to come. In these two years that I've been there, I've learned how much more we are, what we do, and what goes into this thing called tourism. And so as I've learned, it's been a privilege to go around the community and talk to others about what goes into this to make it happen. So who are we? Hopefully, you've heard of us by now, but we are the official tourism marketing organization for Pinellas County, working both in the state of Florida, in the U.S., and around the world to promote the destination and ultimately drive visitation to the destination to increase economic impact. How are we funded? Tourism Development Tax, otherwise known as the bed tax. This is a supplemental tax paid by all overnight visitors. If you're staying overnight in Pinellas County for under six months, doesn't matter if you're staying in a hotel, short-term rental, RV park, down at Fort DeSoto at the campsite, you're paying the bed tax. We are one of eleven counties in the state of Florida that collect a six percent bed tax, and we started doing that in twenty fifteen. We reached the High Tourism Impact Status Designation, where we could go from five cents to six cents. We're one of eleven counties that do that. And then these tourist development tax dollars, what what can they be used for? They can be used for two things essentially under state statute, and that is to market the destination as well as pay for projects that will increase tourism to the destination. Here in Pinellas County, we're also governed, in addition to the state statute, by our local tourism development plan, and ours reads that sixty percent of that TDT goes to fund our marketing efforts, our organization, and forty percent goes to fund those capital projects. Most importantly, beach nourishment. And actually, beach nourishment is the only project that we have that has a dedicated percentage. It's one-half of one percent goes specifically towards beach nourishment. So what do we do? Obviously, we're the marketing organization, and advertising and promotions, that's the largest portion of our budget. That's what people think of. That is all of the integrated media plans that we have working the entire funnel. But we also do public relations, and our PR folks do a great job at coordinating with media and journalists, publications from around the world to bring them here in person to the destination, experience them, the destination themselves. Come see our beaches, our wonderful hotels, our great Michelin guide recommended restaurants, and our world-class museums, and then go back and tell the world about those. And the best part about that is it costs a whole lot less than the the paid media there. Digital and data, this does all of our data and our website. We're a data-driven organization, so all the decisions we make rely on that data we receive. We have a lot of it. Business development, these are all of our sales teams. So from the meetings and conferences, people think we don't have a convention center, so we don't get conventions, conferences, and meetings here. Yes, we do. We do have a segment of properties up and down our thirty-five miles of beach, as well as in downtown St. Petersburg, all the way up to Innisbrook Resort, where we can accommodate those large groups, incentives, corporate groups, as well as associations. Sports Commission, they're bringing tournaments here. They're bringing amateur sports here every week. Right now, our sports team is up at the Bay Care Ballpark. They've got the AAC Athletic Baseball Tournament going on there. So everything from the World Shuffleboard Championship down at the Shuffleboard Club in St. Petersburg, to bowling tournaments, to swimming competitions, sailing competitions, softball, they do it all. They bring it here, and they drive hundreds of thousands of room nights. Film Commission, we do have a film commission here. One of the projects that that they worked on recently in in partnership with the city is to bring the HDTV, the now I'm I'm going to get the name of the show. Rock the Block, the most popular one, to the destination. They work with a lot of films, the biggest one, and one with the most notoriety, probably being Dolphin Tale a few years ago. Do a lot of Hallmark, a lot of Lifetime movies. Global Leisure Travel, we split into two. We have one team that focuses on the U.S. and Canadian market. Canada is our largest international market by far and away. Last year, we got over about five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand visitors from Canada coming here, and they work with the trade, work with those tour operators to educate them on the destination, and then put together packages to sell, for their agents to sell to the destination. And on the international side, this is we have teams in the UK and London, teams in Germany, and then down in Latin America, both in Brazil, now Bogota, Colombia, as well as Mexico City, that promote the destination. Community engagement, I alluded to earlier, they're out in the community talking about the value of tourism and working with our chambers and our community groups. Brand activations, they represent us at these elite events. If there's an event going on, there's going to be visitors and residents there. Our brand activations team is there representing us. To the residents, they're talking about the value of tourism, and to visitors, they're pointing them in the right direction for recommendations on dinner, attractions, and things to do while they're in in the market. And then our finance and administration team, they make sure we can do the job. So we talk about economic impact. What did that look like in two thousand and twenty-four? Well, it looked like this. Fifteen point four million visitors, occupied over six point four million hotel rooms, creating ninety-six point six million in TDT. They had sixty-two million dollars in sales tax by visitor. So, you know, when you think about Penny for Pinellas and how both the county and our municipalities use that for our infrastructure, sixty-two and a half million dollars were paid by those visitors last year, four hundred and twenty million dollars in local taxes. Those are local taxes, including the penny, local local sales tax, bed tax, as well as property tax, six point eight billion in direct spending, that was a record, and eleven point two billion dollar in total economic impact. And when we talk about economic development, tourism and hospitality is the number one job sector in Pinellas County. It accounts for one in ten jobs. Last year, that meant over a hundred thousand jobs. And then nine hundred and ninety-three dollar savings for every, that shouldn't be resident, it should be household. And what does that mean? It saved them that much. It means that when you take those local taxes between property taxes, sales tax, and bed tax that get reinvested into the community, there was a nine hundred and ninety-three dollar value on those taxes that households are not paying for the services that we get to enjoy here each and every day. So moving in two thousand and twenty-four, we had our campaign was Let Shine, and then the storms came through in September and October, and we knew that we had to change directions, and we wanted to come up with, how do we go and let the world know that, yes, we were punched in the mouth, we were damaged, we were not destroyed, and that especially those visitors that are coming from overseas, the further you are, the further out is your booking window. We had to hit the ground out there and let them know immediately when they're seeing images on the news of cranes through buildings in St. Pete, roofs ripped off Tropicana Field, that eighty percent of the destination was open within weeks, and that we were ready to welcome them back, and we wanted to make sure that they knew that. So we came up with the campaign of Still Shining, and it really was embraced by the community, and we highlighted local businesses as they reopened in and talked about how they were still shining. We partnered with them on creating a discount package to offer folks who are thinking about coming here. And then one of the things that we had were these little buttons, and you'll recall it was election season, and they said, we're going to do these Still Shining buttons. I said, you know, nobody does buttons anymore. That's so nineteen eighties, and they said, well, exactly, we're going to do it. And just this week, I was at a property having breakfast, and the waitress was actually still wearing a Still Shining button. So it's good to see those. Those really took off. And then those are examples of some of the billboards that we had throughout, specifically through Greater Tampa Bay and the state of Florida, letting folks know that we're still shining. Recovery update, where are we at since those storms? You can see on the top, that shows hotel recovery, both supply and demand change since October, through our most recent data in March. And then on the bottom, you've got the vacation rental side. And why are we showing both? Well, because you think that hotels make up the entire bed tax, and on any given month, about thirty-five to forty percent of that bed tax is collected through short-term rentals. And so you can see on the on the hotel side of things, to give you an example of impact on TDT, October, right after the storms, we were down thirty percent. November, we were flat. December, we were up. January, we were up, and we're now six months through the fiscal year, and we're just off by five percent from last year's numbers. As you can see, the hotels are doing well. The vacation rental market, both on the supply and demand side, is lagging, but it's continuing to improve each and every month, and that demand continues to keep pace with the increase in supply. Here's a snapshot of the Tourism Development Tax, and this is for the the month of March specifically. You'll see, year over year, we're down five percent. Last March was the best single month we've had in Pinellas County tourism history as far as bed tax collections. So it's good to see that we're not falling behind too much, given the circumstances. That's largely driven by Clearwater, excuse you, or bless you. That's largely driven by Clearwater Beach and demand there, a high occupancy rate, as well as St. Petersburg with the increase of supply. How are we doing here in Treasure Island? So this is Treasure Island TDT since October. So you can see, similar to other communities, once you get towards the southern Barrier Island communities, we're still in recovery mode. The good news is, as you're well aware, as we're continuing to improve, but I wanted to show you a snapshot of where you stand. So we came through Still Shining. We got done with that in January. We turned the page with the calendar year. We came up with a new campaign. What was it going to be? What does it look like? Well, when we surveyed visitors and potential visitors, we know that three out of four people plan for a beach vacation for their next vacation. We know that they love our beaches and our weather, but they also saw, we saw that they're doing so much more when they're here in market. So how do we take advantage of the wealth of resources and activities and blessings that we have here in Pinellas County for that visitor and put it into a campaign? We did it with the Amper Sand campaign, and this is an ad that just ran in Midwest, Northeast, and Florida markets.
Looking for more from your next vacation? Come to St. Pete Clearwater, where you can rise and shine. Enjoy a few chips and dip. Discover arts and crafts and wrap up with dinner and a show. In St. Pete Clearwater, find just what you're looking for and then some. Book now at visitSBC.com.
That's what it looks like on TV. This is what it looks like on a billboard, in magazines, some of our various other modes of communication. Again, these are just examples. We've got about thirty of these, Amper Sand themes, where we combine different things from around the destination to highlight. We're more than just the weather and the sand. What does that look like? So last year, we went back to New York City, where we had not been since the pandemic. This is One Liberty Plaza, and when we went in, we we totally took it over. We were scheduled to be in there between January and February. It actually was stayed up through April. So while we anticipated ten million impressions So while we anticipated 10 million impressions, it was significantly more. But you know, the amount of people that travel through there on a daily basis, you couldn't avoid being introduced to the destination. This was in Philadelphia. This is on Eighth and Market, I believe. Just an example of when we go into one of our key markets, those being two of the top four for inbound visitation. We want to go in there and work the top of the funnel. We want to make a statement. From Visitors With Love, as I bring it in for a landing, this is something that we're very proud of. And this is how we, this is a campaign that's focused here internally with the residents. We know we have a million residents almost in Pinellas County and they are brand ambassadors for us. And so we talk about the value of tourism through various methods. We focus on some of the events that we like to do, the elite events, such as sanding ovations, things that we look forward to each and every year, but also drive tourism to the destination, as well as some of the capital benefits that we receive from there. So these are some of those elite events. Last year, I think we funded 33 of these. I encourage you, as you get more and more events, to apply for those. We just up the caps on what we will provide for marketing and sponsorship opportunities there. This is an example of what we do. This is at John's Pass Seafood Festival. That's the From Visitors With Love stage. We partnered with Creative Pinellas to find local entertainment to perform on this stage and at these events. And then these are some of the capital projects that we funded with Bed Tax recently. So with that, I'd like to apologize for Joan for going way over time. Thank you for having me this evening. Thank you for your partnership and love to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm sorry? Well, we're going, right now, we're doing public comment. So the first public comment that we have is for Desiree Garcia.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Desiree Garcia and I am one of the main drummers at the Treasure Island Drum Circle. I've been going there for 27 years. I facilitate drum circles and I participate in circles all around the state, including Nocomas in Sarasota, which are home to spontaneous drum circles like ours. I'm also a high school teacher. Police Chief Barkley's report was compelling and deeply shocking. Although I have witnessed some of the incidents he's spoken about, dogs, marijuana use, fights and vending, I was unaware of everything he spoke on. There's absolutely no excuse for people to break the law and disrespect the police. What he described was just really awful. However, also to be considered should be the hundreds, if not thousands, of positive encounters people, both local and out of state, have had at the circle. This is really, truly a unique, fun experience that Treasure Island Beach offers. I'm sure the participants contribute to the local economy, too. I know I've spent thousands of dollars over the years shopping at Publix, eating out and paying for parking. I was, we're hoping to collaborate with the police department and try to clean up our circle. Before Chief Barkley begins the process of shutting down the circle, if he hasn't done so already, could we please try to work together to transform the culture of the circle to a more family-friendly experience and shut down those after-party, whatever they are that's happening after the sunset? That has nothing to do with the drum circle. I want to assure you guys that this truly is a spontaneous weekly event with no structure or leaders. If anyone leaves anything, it's to drummers. Without the drummers, there's no circle. What we haven't done before is we haven't come together as a group and organized and worked with the police. There's been, you know, people and people try to talk to violators and people out there and they're, they don't have anything to back them up. So Sunday, we initiated a meeting and brought together people who will be interested in working with us. Everyone agreed it would be a good start if I came, did some research and reached out to the city council. Natalie did a great job, May 6th, representing to you the soul of the circle. But Chief Barkley is correct when he says there has been no accountability. Hopefully, it's not too late for a group of us to try in a different way versus just one person at a time to control the behavior. I know I've been guilty of just coming out with my drum and plopping down and enjoying the fun vibes and ignoring the bad behavior. So we came up with sort of a preliminary plan to reach out to you guys with. We could try to police ourselves with help, of course, from the police department. We could create signs with the ordinances on it, walk around, stop the drumming, you know, and back up the ordinances with signs. We could go in groups of two or three and police the circle, talk to people, and then if they don't comply, we could work with the police department in identifying those people and helping out. I'm willing to take responsibility to step up and take quote-unquote ownership of the circle with the group of us and to, you know, report back to you guys and commit to you that we will do whatever is necessary to work with you. What I'm suggesting is a true transformation of the circle. It doesn't have to be like this. This behavior doesn't occur in Nocomas in Sarasota, where they have these drum circles like, that are very similar to this as well. As a group, let's see here. Also regarding your decision to shut down the circle, we would like to ask the police department to please, you know, maybe start backwards and get rid of that crowd at night with the DJs and those people just walk up. When I'm leaving the circle, there's people walking in, into the beach. We could, you know, I mean, we could walk out there. We know who's smoking pot. We can go and identify those people. We can talk to them and we can identify them for the police. We can talk to the vendors. We can tell the people with dogs, "You're not welcome at our circle. You've got to leave." I know that's a troublesome issue to deal with. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I have no other cards. Is there anyone else? Mr. Baszak?
Hey, Robert Baszak, District 1, begun a month. You miss me? Did anything go on? Did I miss something? Chuck? No, okay. First of all, I guess I missed the whole drum circle thing, but I kind of agree with the lady that maybe try self-policing. It is a cultural event. The marketing presentation I thought was really good and I think it makes me want to move to St. Pete. So I think I'm going to sell my house right now and move. I think Joan has one of the most important jobs here is to be the Director of Economic Development. Most, one of the most important jobs, and it's interesting, on the agenda she wrote, she's part of administration. I think she should put a title down. It's an important title. It's something that we really need to focus on. The last mayor, Tyler, ran on, I think, on a great platform. One of the things he said, he wanted to develop the land on the south side of John's Pass. And he made a really interesting comment. He said, "People come here and stay in our fine hotels," Arthur's being one of them, "and then they party someplace else. They spend money someplace else. They don't spend here." So he ran on a platform to develop this island for a place to go from the hotel to a nice restaurant, a nice bar, a nice music establishment. Hasn't, hasn't happened. Which is why I think Joan's job is so important. The marketing director here talked about John's Pass. You Google what to do in Pinellas County and John's Pass comes up. Well, guess who owns land on John's Pass? We do. It's a baron. We need to really work on this. I've asked Joan now twice to perhaps, once a month, every other meeting, provide a presentation, both to you and to us, on what is going on with John's Pass, 108th, both sides of 107th, and the yacht club. Just give us an update. I think there's so many great opportunities and maybe we can use his expertise to come and bring high-end stuff. It's nice to see the numbers are going up, by the way. I guess hotel rooms are still like 24% down. Arthur needs to work on that. Perhaps get us more rooms. But we want this to be the place. I don't even know where Clearwater is. I don't go north of Dunedin. I want to stay here. But what do we do here? Where do we go? We go to a nice hotel. We got a couple of nice restaurants. I want to stay here. I want to live here. Joan was hired. Let her do her job. But she also needs to communicate to us, once a month, on what she's doing. All this land, it has to be a public-private partnership. We need to work together. Maybe greenlight severances. Maybe provide some tax incentives. Talk to some of these high-end vendors. Bring bonefish in, places like that. I don't know. But I want to live here. I don't want to go to Clearwater. I want to stay here. So let's make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Barb?
I haven't planned to speak tonight, but I was listening to your talk about the drum circle. And I hope there's a way that the community and the police and the city can all work together to keep the drum circle. I know that when I have family and friends come and people in the community, every, anytime I go there, I always see a ton of people I know. And I mean, even like my little granddaughters, you know, they come and they're dancing. And I mean, it's something unique and funky and quirky. And that's part of what our community is. We're, you know, we're funky, we're quirky. And let's try and keep those pieces of us that make us who we are and just find a way to make it work.
Thanks, Barb. We had one more. Please give your name and your address, please.
My name is Coley Thomason. My address is 8465 76th Avenue North. I would like to echo what Desiree said and what a few people have said about drum circle. I think it's important for the community. There are, you seen some bad behavior. But if anybody was to sit in that circle, they would see people coming up from all over and leaving with good vibes, with a good, better feeling, with things that are intangible. I've been going there for years and years and years. I'm a Florida boy, was born at Bayfront, and I love the beach. To have that circle go away would be a travesty. If there's anything I can do to help, I will give you my phone number. You have my address. All you have to do is ask. And I guarantee you, I'm accountable. So. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else, I'm going to close public comment. And we're going to move on to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Vasquez?
Thank you guys for speaking on the drum circle. I wasn't even going to bring it up, but that was pretty awesome. And boy, do I understand it. And Natalie, who you spoke of, is near and dear to me. So I would agree. And it's awesome and I hope we can figure something out. The one thing we have to remember is that one of our police officer was permanently, permanently injured. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, things didn't happen to bring it under control at that time and it really should have been. But I really do hope, now that people are standing up to, you know, be accountable, hopefully, something can work out because we cannot let what happened back then happen again. And, you know, it's not so much the smoking pot and dogs on the beach. It's, you know, the aggression, the people getting hurt, the assault, things like that. That's the bad stuff. You know, dogs, yes. But, you know, it's awesome to see you guys here and want to stand up and take accountability. So thank you for being here. So on to what I wanted to talk about. And give me a little grace tonight, if you would, Mayor. Not this last Saturday, but Saturday before, I had the opportunity to do fire ops with our fire department and several other fire departments. And wow, was that amazing. I had to put on the uniform, which, good lord. It's so heavy. I don't know how these guys and ladies do it. It is crazy. Going into smoky buildings, which it was fake smoke, so I didn't even have the soot and smell, but you can't see in front of your hand. And I would say, what a valuable thing for really anybody that has the opportunity to do it. I would say do it because it will give you an entirely different aspect to what these women and men do every single day. I mean, I was only there for, what, six hours, I believe? I was dead. And I'm, I'm a pretty fit, healthy person and I was exhausted. And it's, it's pretty amazing what they do. And I'm going to kind of use that to lead into something else. And that's going to, our public safety building. I just want to touch on that. Again, anybody who's heard me talk knows that I'm a huge advocate of our first responders. And especially after going out there and experience, experiencing that, it was a little frustrating, the amount of hoops that our police and fire are having to jump through just to get a building. Their building was destroyed. They were promised a building 10 years ago. And yeah, now it costs twice as much because we've waited 10 years. And if we wait four more years, it's going to cost more. And if we wait 10 more years, which we can't, because they need a building. They're not asking for a Taj Mahal. And I would just ask that people really consider what they do on a daily basis. You know, talk to them, you know. It's, it's something, you know, this illusion was put out that it was going to be paid for in full from the beginning before the hurricane. It was never going to be paid for. No government building is ever paid for in full. That's not the way it works, not the way it ever works. You know, you get grants, you, you know, hopefully pay it off in a sooner, you know, rate with grants and different things. And we're still alive in the Senate and House. So we're still trying. But I just want, you know, I would love for people, that really just kind of fired me up even more. So seeing what these women and men do every day and all they want is a place, it's a thousand square foot bigger than the 70-year-old building that they've been in. And it's fortified. And they can get back out on the island to help us even sooner. God forbid another storm come. So I would just ask that everybody really consider that. One thing that I really, and I'll make it quick. One thing that I wanted to really touch on, that I hate that I even have to touch on, especially with our Visit St. Pete Clearwater folks here. But it has to be addressed and it's what's happening on social media. I'm not talking about a community organization. I'm talking about a few people that are putting out absolute, complete, false information, slanderous information that's going on on social media that is affecting everything from our city manager interviews to things that we're not even talking about as a commission yet. And, you know, half-truths, it's just, it's getting out of hand. And the reason I'm addressing it is for the citizens of Treasure Island, not just, you know, maybe the handful of people that are putting it out. Because these citizens of Treasure Island look at these resident pages as a source for information. And they, you know, I don't expect people to know exactly what's going on at the Senate level or in, you know, Tallahassee. And that's why you elected us to be your, to be your voices. And that's what we're trying to do. But when it's met with slanderous comments about individuals and half-truths, it does no good for our city and it's not good for the citizens of our city. And I'm going to address a couple directly. One is the tall buildings post that has been out. So to be clear, as far as I know, there is no one that sits on this commission that is is an advocate of tall buildings. And to be clear, tall buildings is a 12 to 15 and above story building. That is the definition of a tall building. I don't think there's one of us that are looking for tall buildings. Do we have to look at our current code? Yes. And when we get there, we have to. Because what some of you don't know, and what has not been put on social media, is Senate Bill 1730 that passed and will go into full effect July 1st, which is the revision of the Live Local Act. If we don't start working with our landowners and coming up with a beautiful plan for our beautiful Treasure Island, then guess what? What this bill allows them to do is supersede all local government. We won't even see their plans, and they can build whatever they want. It can be mixed use. It can be apartments and storage sheds. It can be big concrete buildings 12 stories tall. It can be so many things, and we have no say over it. So if we don't stop treating our property owners like the enemy, calling them greedy and everything else because they want to return on their investment that they've made and they've held on to, hoping that the city would start working with them, they're going to take advantage of this Live Local Act. And we're going to end up with a concrete jungle, with true tall buildings. That's what's going to happen. I'm not upset about the people that have been writing multiple emails begging us not to build tall buildings or to change that, because they're reading false information on social media and half-truths. And it's got to stop. So I would encourage you to look at that Senate Bill 1730 and understand, as we move forward, we're not trying to make a concrete jungle, but we have to work with our property owners, or we're going, we're going to end up with that. And so I definitely wanted to bring that up. And one thing, and one of the biggest things is, feelings are what's being put out there, not facts. Whether it's toward people that are applying for city manager, whether it's the tall buildings, whether it's individual commissioners, it's feelings. And I understand, everybody's entitled to feelings, but it's being stated as facts, and it's not. So I would highly encourage those who are putting it out there to stop with the clickbait. It's irresponsible, and it's bad for our city. And I am a strong, anybody who knows me knows I'm a strong advocate for freedom of speech. But when freedom of speech is half-truths and slander and causes harm to our city and our citizens, and really prevents people from wanting to come to our city to work or to live, that's not good for anybody. So if you're the ones reading it, please take it with a grain of salt and do your own homework. Please, I beg you. Talk to us, your commissioners, we can talk with you about it. And just, it's got to stop, guys. I mean, it's not good for our city. We're here working hard, trying to make our city a better, a better place, and know that we're going to do our homework. I don't believe any of us has interviewed any city managers. It was put out there about a short list and everything else. There is no short list. There's just a list. And I'm just, again, I hate that I had to address it, especially with our visitors here, but it needed to be addressed. And I love our city. I grew up here like many, many of you. I want what's best for our city. Treasure Island's never going to look the same. What age hasn't done, the storm has. We can still have a beautiful city to live in, but we have to work with our landowners. We have to.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes. I don't have a PowerPoint today. I had one for the, for the workshop, but it got canceled. So I will have to do that a different time. But I want to agree with two things that Tammy just said around. I have seen a lot of things around this, I guess, tall buildings. And it seems that there's, there's no, there's no in-between. It's either, it's the way it is now, or it is 22 stories. It jumps from where it is now to 22 stories. And kind of like she said, I've never heard one commissioner, I've never even heard one resident ever say that they want 22-story buildings. So I don't really know where any of that comes from. It seems rather ridiculous to me. And the other thing, I'll say she's right. You know, people I've heard in the past were all worked up about, you know, a seven-story building or something going up in John's Pass, you know, considering there's already a seven-story, I think, condo right there. But, but if we don't work with these developers, they can build a 20-story building if they want. You know, if we actually work with them, we could probably get them to build a beautiful seven, eight-story building that they could make a return investment on. But, but like she said, if we don't, they can just build whatever they want. So whenever we get around to talking to that, I actually have a science project I'm going to bring in that displays kind of the different heights and everything, sort of like Ginger's sponge and seawall thing, where hopefully I can put a, really, a kind of a face to what we're really arguing over here, which doesn't seem like a lot to me. But now I'll get into what I was going to say. I just want to thank everyone for the trash. I know we put out, we put the cans all the way along here. My district two folks that walk the beach every day, they're always reporting to me like almost on a daily basis. So they said it's like much, much, much better. The only thing that they did say to me was, the cans right there, I guess I'll call it the St. Pete Beach Lot, the one that they own, are totally overflowing. So it's like, St. Pete managed those cans, or do we?
St. Peter's.
Okay. So it's, so their cans now are all overflowing and ours are good. So I guess there's nothing we can do about that. Can we let them know that they need to maybe put more cans?
We can reach out to them.
Okay. That'd be great. The second thing I want to say thanks about is, I personally received my refund for my permitting fees, so I assume that other folks are probably receiving theirs. So it was a nice little check to get in the mail. The other thing, I've gotten a lot of emails on from multiple residents are various, you know, vacant houses around the neighborhood that literally have never had anything done to them. I mean, since the flood, the furniture's still in there. No one's ever been in it. And I, I think it's, you know, getting close to becoming like a health hazard. So I don't know, you know, what we can do, or what we have done, or, or, you know, where we're going with that.
Yeah. Code enforcement has stepped up their patrols. They had backed off a little bit to be able to handle the influx of permitting. They are back out on the road, seeing each neighborhood at least for an hour per week.
Okay.
We're looking for unpermitted construction, abandoned, derelict, nuisance properties, that type of stuff.
Okay. Okay. I did see an email that we were doing that. So that, that will apply to this then also, looking for places that are maybe a health hazard. The next thing I had was around, I've had about three or four phone calls from residents and one email. Actually, I actually got a phone call from someone from District 3, and it's all around properties that seem to just be, just dismissing the train modification manual and just bringing in fill. I think I've been told of five or six properties that have done that. And I think the one guy who called me was actually from District 3, and he said, listen, the guy next to me is doing this. He goes, I'm not, I'm not going through, you know, I'm not going to go through this whole rigmarole with the, with the train modification manual. If this guy doesn't, is allowed to do this, I'm just going to do it. So I feel like we're borderline about ready to lose control of, you know, fill here. I personally wasn't a proponent of TMM, and I think that, I think that it's so cumbersome that these developers and builders and residents don't want to deal with it. And I feel bad for the people that have tried to follow it, because I've gotten report back from one of them that, you know, no one knows what's in it, and then they have to go out to a consultant every time there's a question, and they've gotten really nowhere with it. So the reason I bring this up is I, when we passed this, I believe multiple people up here said, we're passing this to get fill, but now we need to, now we're going to try to make it simpler. So my point basically is, I think you're going to, we're going to lose control of this pretty soon, where people are just going to start bringing it in. And if we're not doing anything about it, all these new people are going to say, why can't I do it? They did it. So I just think we need to get started on making this thing simpler, because I think that it's just, I think it's, I think, I think we're actually going backwards and just allowing fill in now with no, no ramifications. So I, you know, I would like to see us, you know, get a scope of work and a cost from Kim Lee Horn to come up with a simpler version of this thing, so we can actually have people following something that we have some control over. Because, and, you know, and maybe, maybe I'm getting bad information, but I've heard it from, like I said, five or six different people. So I don't know if we can look into doing that with Kim Lee Horn, because I think it's just way too cumbersome. The last thing I had was, I had actually brought up the storm water last time in our bills, and I've gotten a bazillion people sending me their bills. And, you know, I started really delving into the budget, and, you know, we have on wastewater, which I know, I believe it was Commissioner Dickey said that, you know, that was a very lucrative fund. But I mean, these are enterprise funds, and I mean, we have, we have nine and a half million in carryforwards. Now, 5.2 million, that's a grant for the lift station, but 4.3 million of excess dollars sitting there. And storm water, we have, we're going to have in next year's budget about $3 million of excess cash sitting there. And that includes all the maintenance items. So I'm going to bring this up and then put this on the agenda for the next meeting to possibly have a workshop to look into these, because I've had just too many people reach out to me. I look at my own bills, too. They're outrageous. And this is really just looking like another tax on the residents to me, and that it's not what we need to be doing. So I'll be bringing this up going forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Sazan?
Yes. I had a lot of calls, emails, texts regarding Treasure Bay, so I hear you loud and clear. We definitely have to wait until the contractor's done with Treasure Bay to find a plan, a plan forward. Based on what Commissioner Vasquez said regarding the tall buildings post on social media, if comments don't follow their narrative, they remove them. So it's really a one-sided conversation. I've had a couple people complain to me that, you know, they post something and their comments are removed shortly thereafter. And it's work, live, and invest for Treasure Island. That's a very important part. And I was wondering what the status is on the tennis fencing at Treasure Bay? What, what's the status on replacing the fencing?
I believe we had to go out to RFP for that. Yeah, we have to go out for request for proposal.
Okay.
Over the threshold.
Gotcha.
Same threshold.
Yeah, I'm getting a lot of calls for that as well. And that's really it. Thank you.
All right. Yes, there is social media, and yes, there is a lot of inaccuracies out there. And I can name a few of them, and I'll take a couple of seconds to do that. One says that we're going to have buildings on 107th that are eight feet from the road. That is not correct. It is, if you go, it looks a lot different. So don't believe everything that you're reading on the media. Don't believe everything you're hearing from some of the folks up here. I mean, one of the things is that I'm hearing is that, well, I'm hearing that, you know, we can do whatever they want now if we don't do, do something with this Live Local. That's not true. It has boundaries there as well. We couldn't go 20 stories up. We also have to follow the county code. So we need to know what we're saying ourselves. Another thing is, there's the Pinellas Press. I don't know where it came from, but it basically says, new commissioner takes a stance on city debt. Well, with that proposal, or with the slideshow that he had, Commissioner Clark, he made it sound as though the city is bankrupt. The city is not bankrupt, nowhere near bankrupt. We have a total debt of 6.3 million. We have near $40 million that we are going to be spending. What's our biggest problem with that $40 million? We can't get together and push something out and make sure that something beneficial for the community is happening. We do have to build a new fire station or safety facility, which is fire and police. We do have to build a new Public Works building. We do have to do a lot of repairs. So it isn't as though we have a lot of extra money, but we certainly do not have a debt problem. So, you know, I think that what this was really for, when it was comments, it was for quick hits and things that maybe needed to have a little bit more time after the fact. But I don't think that it has, you know, for everybody to get up here, doing exactly what I'm doing right now, and then basically wasting your time, wasting my time, you know, that isn't what it's all about. What it's all about is trying to get to the agenda and get things moving forward. With that, we'll move on to the city attorney. Do you have a report?
Yes, I do. I have a brief one this evening. First of all, I want to say that this is my last commission meeting and public meeting with the City of Treasure Island, and I have three points that I want to go through. The first one is that the final legal update is in your inboxes, and that I have also CC'd Mr. Sabatini on it, and we'll be going through it on Thursday, so he'll be up to speed on all of the litigation. But for my last day, I don't have it for this meeting, I'd hoped, but if only wishing made it so, I will provide each one of you in your inboxes, as well as the acting city manager and Mr. Sabatini, a brief overview of where we are on certain projects. So at least it's a base memo of kind of where I'm leaving off and where he's picking up. And then last but not least, I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank this commission and former commissioners and commissions for providing me the opportunity to have served this wonderful community. Throughout my time here, I've met incredibly talented staff members, dedicated board members, and truly amazing and generous residents. And for that, I will always be grateful. So thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you. Chief, city manager?
Yes.
Either title.
So city manager's report?
Yes, please.
Okay. First, I just wanted to mention, later on the agenda, I'm presenting the city's after-action report for Hurricanes Debbie, well, basically Helene and Milton. Just to let everyone know, that's an ongoing process. That's something we constantly do all year long. We kind of wrap it up this time of year with the beginning of hurricane season coming up. So in that respect, we're doing something different this year. We're taking a 360 look at how we performed and where we can do better and how we can make improvements. So we have a quick six-question survey that regards people's perceptions of not just fire, rescue, and police and the first responders in Public Works, but entire cities' prevention, action during the hurricane, and then recovery efforts afterwards. So we'd love for folks to go to our website, or they can find it on Facebook page as well. And it's quick six, six questions, and I'll give us some needed feedback so that we can do better. There's always room for improvement, right? So please, please look at that. Also related to hurricanes, we are having our annual Treasure Island Hurricane Expo on Wednesday, the 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. right here at City Hall on the fifth floor. Attendees can expect, at this family-friendly event, a presentation from Mike Clay, chief meteorologist at Spectrum Bay News 9. He's a regular presenter for us. Gives us great insight on the upcoming expectations for hurricane season, shares some of his wisdom. You can learn evacuation procedures, storm response plans, how to prepare your home or business, get flood insurance info, Red Cross resources, and the Pinellas County's annual hurricane guide, which is always a great culmination of resources for residents and businesses. Our HR department wanted to announce, and we want to let everyone know that Jessica, oh, Jessica is still here, yes. She received the, or was awarded the prestigious 2025 Jerry Livingston Claims Excellence Award by PGIT. That's Preferred Government Insurance Trust. This is because of her extraordinary dedication to employee wellness, employee well-being, our mental health, our physical health. She weekly visits Public Works at 7:00 a.m. I accompanied her last week. That's an early morning start, but our Public Works folks can do it, so some of us office dwellers should be able to get out there and, and meet with them as well, just to uplift them and let them know that the city's looking out for them. During Helene Milton, she was one of the primary folks that were responsible during the recovery for getting the food trucks to come, for housing, transportation, and just overall encouragement of staff. So she works with Carrie Auerbach on beach cleanups. So congratulations. Kerry Auerbach on beach cleanups. So congratulations to our HR Director, Jessica. It's a beautiful glass award about this tall, so very nice. Public Works, please join me also in celebrating Public Works Department in National Public Works Week. Just recognizes the stuff that they do all the time that we don't ever think about. You know, what happens when you flush the toilet? Where does all that water go when it rains? You know, a lot of infrastructure needs maintenance. You look around and you see beautiful medians and landscaping, among other things. That's our Public Works. So thank the Public Works first responder when you get a moment this week, please. Let's see, Fire Department, our own Mercedes Nelson Palmer has headed up the third annual, annual Walk to the Beach Day on Friday, May 23rd. That's going to be between 1:00 and 3:00 p.m. along Gulf Boulevard. What is Walk to the Beach Day, you ask? That is, well, we are a little insecure here in Treasure Island because we don't have a school, and most fire departments do Walk to School Day, where we teach kids and parents and teachers how to safely cross intersections and use crosswalks and traffic to be aware of pedestrians and bicycles. So we teach folks, when you're crossing Gulf Boulevard, do it at a crosswalk, hit the button for the lights, wait for traffic to stop, thank the drivers. It's, we set up all along Gulf Boulevard. This year, we've got Madeira Beach and St. Pete Beach partnering with us. So this thing has taken off, and it's kind of gotten legs of its own. So we're very proud of our, our life safety educator, Ms. Palmer, Nelson Palmer, for putting that together. On the police side of things, they created 551 records in their computer aided dispatch this week. Their selected traffic enforcement program resulted in eight traffic citations and 48 written warnings. 57 parking citations were issued, along with one dog on the beach violation. And I will take a moment, if I could, Mr. Mayor, to, to address some of the comments made by Desiree and the other folks. I don't believe staff was ever instructed to shut down the drum circle, and that's certainly not our intent. We love that they want to self regulate, and I honestly had a note in here to mention it, so I'm glad it was brought up. It reports from last week where that did seem quieter. You know, we love the drum circle. We're fine with it. We think it's a great, I've seen emails and in this role as acting city manager, I've gotten phone calls on it. We respect it and your right to gather, and it's a great thing. It just, the ordinances need to be followed. And kudos to you all for stepping up and hopefully we can work together to keep this great tradition alive. Parks and Rec Summer Camp Registration has begun. Camp is going to run this year, Summer Camp, from June 2nd through August 8th. Enrollment to date is 135 10-week full camp enrollees, and then 113 weekly camp enrollees. That's where they register for various weeks, for whatever reason. In Community Development, they wanted to emphasize that your building permits will not expire during this ongoing state of emergency. So no stress there. You know, we realize it's, we understand it's hard to get a contractor. You're waiting on an insurance payment to come through. We have empathy for that, and just, you know, as long as this commission is approving this, we will continue to work with our folks to make sure you can get your work done. The city's blanket permit fee waivers will end, though, on May 31st this year. So if at all possible for your own benefit, if you can, go ahead and get your permits in. That way, you don't have to pay a fee on them. And then on the administration side, we're, we're taking the grant manager position that was suggested in multiple committee meetings and here by the commission. So that is in development. We're looking at different ways to provide that service, and we hope to have report back to you folks so we can make a decision on that. We realize it's a, it's a pivotal part of the three legged stool with community development and, and our Joan, our economic development. So getting that in place, and what some of you mentioned in your comments, we understand is a priority. So that's going to be front and foremost on our, on our agenda to do. I am pleased to announce that we have offered positions to a finance director and an assistant finance director. Both have been accepted. Our new assistant finance director, David Green, starts tomorrow. So again, getting finance in, getting a true picture, and having finance professionals. Our finance director comes from County of Palm Beach, where he was assistant chief financial officer. So David has a broad background, but also in grants management and appropriations. So I think having this information to base our decisions on going forward, not that Mike Howard isn't an absolute rock star, you know, but Mike is, is a contract employee with us, and we'll have him on to get everyone up to speed, and then we'll have to do something really nice for Mike, getting us through the stuff period. Public Works, I don't know if Jess is ready for me to announce this yet, but I'm going to. In Public Works, we recognize leadership is paramount, right? So we've, we've made a proposal to our newly hired assistant director, Gary, and we'd like to move him up to department director and head that direct, that department up and move forward on projects that you all have suggested. So you'll be seeing a lot more of him at the podium. And we do have likely candidates for the assistant director position in house. I'm proud to announce. So we'll be posting that as well. I did also, and Jess is probably still squirming in her seat, but she can squirm some more. I did meet with a great candidate for the directorship of Community Development Department. Talked with her today. Bobby Shay Lee is her name. She is a very, very well connected in the county and the state legislatively. So I think that brings a lot to the table. Her leadership skills just blew me away. So we've offered her a position, and we're working through the pre hire stuff, but we're looking at her starting next Wednesday. Yeah, we're moving right ahead. You know, you asked me to sit in the seat to, to move ahead. We can't do it without skilled and qualified department directors. So Mary Ellen will continue to provide excellent leadership in community development and the technical expertise that we need. We anticipate bringing a budget amendment before the commission next meeting to, to allow an over hire for Catherine Yonkin, so she can finish up. And that's the former director. Some of the projects that we have her working on, like Phase One of the land development regulations, and a few other things. So we are making progress. We do hear the frustration, and hopefully this, these leadership changes and this new direction will prove fruitful for us. Let's see, I sent the letter that was requested to Barry Burton, showing interest in the county considering taking over wastewater. So we'll, we'll get their request back for information. I know there is a request from commissioners to track the staff hours in that, and we'll make sure that happens as well. Hopefully have something to present back to you as soon as he gets back to us. And then finally, kudos to our PIO, Jason Howard, or Jason Howard, sorry, Jason Beisel. One of my guys in the Fire Department is Jason Howard. But Jason set up the Regional PIO, that's Public Information Officers Meeting, which we hosted here on our beautiful fifth floor event space. They had about 50 public information officers from the multi-county region. Ricky T, Ricky Tees was gracious enough. Brad donated lunch, and they had their quarterly meeting there. So brought a lot of notoriety, and those folks know how to get in touch with people, social media, print, and, and local media. So hopefully that'll bear some fruit as well. And that's all I have. Unless anyone has a question, it's end of report. And I, oh, I did want to thank Jen for her service to the city on behalf of staff. We will, we will certainly miss you and wish you well in your, your endeavors.
Thank you.
End of report.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on. We're now going to do the approval of the minutes. Who actually reads the approval of the minutes? Okay, I guess I'm going to do it, since this is the first one of these I've done. Approval of the following minutes, February 21st, 2023, and January 21st, 2025, regular and workshop meetings, and April 8th, 2025, special meeting.
Second.
Okay, do we have a motion for the second?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you did the motion.
No, that's just reading the title.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I move to approve the minutes of February 21st, 2023, through January 21st, 2025, regular and workshop meetings, and April 8th, 2025, special meeting.
And?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any changes? Hearing none. Let's have the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Commissioner Sazan?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Okay, all unanimous, and we will move on. Next, we have the city manager recruitment update.
Hi, good evening. Normally, my name isn't said this much during a meeting. So just a really fast update. I was able to connect with Doug Thompson, who did, or Doug Thomas, who did our original search through SGR, perfectly willing to do it again. I'm working later this week on redlining the original brochure that we had. So just kind of updating it with, you know, your desire for whatever the qualifications are going to be. I will send that out to each of you, so you can kind of give me your feedback. That's really the first step of all of this, is getting that brochure together. It shouldn't be a ton of changes, so I'll just update it to the best of my ability. If there's anything that you want included, please let me know. If you want to update any photos or anything like that, we can do that as well. So he also, though, had a question, so I'm glad that I have you here. He usually meets with commissioners individually prior to, to get a sense of kind of what everyone is expecting and what you're looking for in a candidate. He has an option. He can either be here one day, coming up in the next, you know, couple of weeks, or he can meet you individually via Teams or Zoom. And I just need to know what you would like to do.
I'm fine with either.
What's the cheapest route?
Zoom.
Let's do Zoom.
Okay.
Good question.
Commissioner Clark, any?
That's fine.
All right. So I'll go ahead and get that set up. I'll do it the same way that I did with the, you know, the other interviews and that kind of thing. Other than that, as soon as I get a timeline of things, I will let you know. But like I said, that brochure is going to be the first piece. So when I get it sent out, the sooner you can get it back to me, the better.
And do we have a projected timeframe?
Usually, the timeframe was like three to four months. But like I said, I'm going to see if I can get, once we get the brochure out there and we actually start getting candidates, we'll have a better idea.
Okay, so how are we moving forward on the details of the present city manager that is on administrative leave? So how are we going to be moving forward with that?
So with the selection of the interim city manager that is scheduled to be on the 27th, and Jen, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, then we are going to head, then we'll move forward with a salary negotiation, getting the contract ready, and be prepared to bring that back on the, on June 3rd, which is what we're ultimately hoping for. The most important thing then is also going to be, when can this person start, whoever you select? So if they don't start, if they cannot start on June 4th, we'll have to make a decision at that time to either, I guess we're going to have to probably look at extending it until the person can start.
So?
Make sure the person has to start.
So how long was the administrative leave good for? To what date?
Till June 3rd.
To June 3rd. Okay, so, all right. Can someone remind me, is there a time limit to how long the chief can do this?
The chief is serving in an acting position, and he can continue to serve in that acting position during Chuck's temporary absence or disability. But once Chuck is no longer with the city, then the chief would be assuming that office, and he already holds an office. So that's why those two are connected. There isn't a, other than that, there's not a limitation on how long he could serve as acting.
So if we kept paying Chuck, he could continue to do this?
Correct.
Because I don't remember, I'll be honest, I don't remember what we all decided last time as far as if the people we're going to interview all said that they want to apply to be a permanent city manager. But I guess it would kind of be up to the chief. But I thought about it over the weekend, and, I mean, he knows everybody here. He's fit into the job well. He's working on the job. If we're going to get a new person in three months, I mean.
He has, he's also the fire chief.
I said it'd be up to him. But I mean, by the time this other person gets up to speed and we get them hired, I mean, they're going to be gone, or we're going to be interviewing someone new. I just think that, and it doesn't really cost any different, probably, because we're either paying a new interim or we're paying Chuck to stay home, I guess, but.
He doesn't want it, though.
Oh, you don't want to do it? Okay. So I didn't hear that part. I did.
No, no, I appreciate your, your kind words and your consideration. I'm happy to help out as long as needed, but the shorter the better for me.
Gotcha. Okay, then that answers my question.
Otherwise, we keep him forever.
I do have some comments, if I may. So I've interviewed already three of the four candidates all today. And at this time, I'm not in favor of hiring an interim city manager. We've already gone through one transition to Chief Bars, and we don't need another transition to an interim manager. Two of the interim candidates specifically said to me that the role of the interim is not to make decisions, but to just keep the lights on and keep the ship moving in the right direction. That is not what we need. Chief Bars is already up to speed. We should keep Chief Bars and keep, keep Chuck on paid administrative leave until we hire a new permanent manager through SGR, or SGR, right. We should also pressure SGR for updates in a timely order. This process for the hiring of a new city manager should be expedited. We don't need four city managers in four months, Chuck, Chief Bars, interim, and permanent. An interim would be disruptive, costly, and terrible situation, especially with hurricane season approaching.
I think you just put Chief Bars.
Not in a bad spot, but he's already said the sooner the better for him.
True. But what's best for the city?
Can I be recognized, John?
Well, that's a personal thing between Chief Bars and the city.
Can I be recognized? Just to be clear, and I'll refer to you, Jen.
Yeah.
We don't technically per charter have an interim position.
Correct.
This is a position with a shorter contract. Am I correct? So it's not technically an interim position. So that's why I think one of the important questions to ask is, you know, if this person works out, and we want to extend their contract, we have the ability. Because I agree, the less turnover, the better. I mean, no question about it. But Chief Bars, when, you know, he graciously, you know, stepped into this role, made it very clear that, you know, the shorter time, the better. And I don't think it's fair to him to, to put him in that position when he's the fire chief. And I think we have to respect that. But we have to remember that technically speaking, it's not an interim because that's per charter, we don't have that position. It's just a shorter contract that, and then if they do a good job, we extend it. And, you know, we go from there. And if, you know, if not, then we wait till this other's done. But it's not unusual in any city to have a short term city manager take a position. That's a little scary that two of them said that. I will say that. I haven't done any interviews yet. So I don't think any of us has. So you, you've got one up on us on that. But yeah, I mean, someone who said they're just a placeholder, who is not doing anything. Chief Bars, who's never been a city manager, has proved that that is not the case.
He's very capable.
Because he has moved heaven and earth in the last three weeks.
Yeah, I wasn't aware that he did not want to do it, which is his own prerogative. I wouldn't have brought it up. But I didn't, I missed that part somewhere along the line.
And that was my intent while moving with these department director positions, was to make sure we had capable department directors and leadership at that level. So whoever, whomever you choose to make city manager, even, even for short term, would be aptly guided by their department directors, and we could continue making progress and moving forward.
All right. So I guess that leaves us with just continuing with our interviews this week. Correct?
Okay. So just so you're aware, there's severance agreement and release has been sent to Chuck, and it's based on the terms that were provided and then amended at the last meeting. So through the 3rd. And so if there are going to be any changes to that based on the 27th, just be sure to let Mr. Sabatini know, so he can make that correction and work with Chuck on that. So you're going to continue with the interim. Go ahead and have the meeting on the 27th to talk about, once all of you have had a chance to interview the four or five once all of you have had a chance to interview the four or five candidates. The only thing that, if I could offer one suggestion is, when you go back to the, the group that did the original search, that in the, in the brief brochure, you specify certain qualifications that are live or die by you. And I say that only in the sense of, and if they don't meet that, there's no reason that it needs to be presented to you. What happened in one of the last city manager searches is, while there were criteria in there, it wasn't necessarily as hard and fast. So the last commission got presented with many candidates that I don't think they would have ever considered. They ended up clearing those off, but it was a lot for them to go through. So that's, that was my only kind of tip.
Thank you. Sure.
Okay, I think that's our update, and we'll move forward from there. All right, our second item, approved resolution 2025-07 for appointment and contract of city attorney.
Yes, so presented for your consideration this evening is the resolution. This resolution 25-07, I'm just flipping to it right now, provides for the appointment of Sabatini Law Firm, PA, as city attorney. So generally, you appoint the firm, and then they designate who is going to serve in that capacity. And we've heard from Mr. Sabatini that he will be serving in that capacity. His contracts would start effective immediately, and that would allow him to have a few days of crossover between he and I. But he will actually take the position and be appointed as city attorney on May 27 at 12:01 a.m., in time for the meeting on May 27. So he'll be hitting the ground running, and I think he's looking forward to that. So before you is the resolution and then also the contract. The contract specifies the services that were outlined in the RFP. There was one change, and it was actually with regard to an insurance issue. And that was based on something that actually our insurance broker asked for, and Mr. Sabatini agreed to. So you will see one stripe through in it that he signed and that the mayor will sign if this is approved. If you have any specific questions on the contract or on the resolution, I'm happy to answer.
I don't.
I don't. Okay, any public comment? Hearing none. We'll close public comment. Can we have a motion, please?
I move to approve resolution 2025-07, appointing Sabatini Law Firm, PA, as the city attorney, effective May 27, 2025, and approving the contract with Sabatini Law Firm, PA.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Please call roll.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Suzanne?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Thank you.
Once again, unanimous, 4-0.
Well, congratulations.
Now, did you say there were two pieces?
They were all taken care of in that one motion.
In the one motion. Great, thank you very much. All right, moving on, temporary fire and police facilities contract.
All right, I'll be presenting this one, Mr. Mayor. Our temporary facilities, which you see behind you there, were delivered immediately post storm. Well, they were delivered post Helene and picked up and taken away, and then brought back immediately post Milton. They've been great housing for our police and fire department, although police does not even have a restroom in theirs. But they're managing. So the, the cost is the issue that we believe drives this. And these, while great temporary facilities, they're not long-term temporary. They're, they're easy to bring in and set up quickly, and they met our needs. We are at a position now to where, as we move forward in designing and beginning to build the permanent public safety facility, however that may look, we do need to move out of these and into a simpler, more construction trailer-type facility. We found a supplier, Will Scott Company, and in your agenda packet are multiple iterations of contracts, depending on how we want to go. But the current facilities combined are about, and, and they're expensive. They're $77,500 a month for both facilities. FEMA was at 100% cost share for about four months, and now we're currently in a situation of the city picking up about 12 and 1/2% of that amount. FEMA does 75%, and then Florida Division of Emergency Management picks up 12 and 1/2, which is half of our 25% cost share. And that will continue on with the new facilities that we propose. Total cost on those, however, depending on which contract iteration you choose, is about $16,000 a month. And we'd be responsible for, in the immediate future, for about 12 and 1/2% of that. Build out and setup of these temporary facilities will take about six to eight weeks from the day we execute the contract. And they'll be needed for approximately 18 months or until a permanent public safety facility is completed. These would be a general fund expenditure, back to the financing. And currently, currently, we are in the 75% federal cost share period. Not sure how long that's going to continue. We do have a claim into our insurance carrier for temporary housing, since our building was damaged and potentially destroyed, depending on the, the findings of their investigation. So that's still in review, and we'll know more on that hopefully soon. But either way, we'd like to petition the commission to permit us to move forward with this lease, at least for both fire department and police department, for 18 months. Comes to a grand total of $289,710. And then there's a setup and removable, removal charge, and it's $1,000, $102,146 for both. As approved before, these would be located over in the parking lot of the former public safety facility on 108th. So it's staff's recommendation that we go with 18-month contracts, just to give us the flexibility. We did work in there, the ability to, for either party to cancel the contract with 90 days' notice, but we would be on the hook for the full lease amount. So with that, I'll pause and take any questions you might have.
So on that, does that include, I'm assuming, do these have to be moved in the event of an evacuation of oncoming storm? Or?
We asked them, and it's, it's basically their liability if they do not choose to move them. They own, they own the facility. If they want to, they sit higher. They're on, they're basically mobile homes on blocks. We'll take the wheels off.
It's their responsibility, not ours.
It's their trailer.
I like that. Okay.
Are they tied down?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
What's the cost to extend, because beyond 18 months?
My understanding is it would just be the monthly charge?
Month to month?
Month to month, yes.
Okay, is there any public comment? Hearing none. We'll close public comment. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the city manager to enter into a contract with Will Scott, Inc. for $391,856 to provide 18 months of temporary public safety facilities to the police and fire department.
Do we have a second? Second?
No second.
You can second it for discussion purposes, if you're so inclined, Mayor. Otherwise, the motion dies for a lack of a second.
I will second it. So what do we have against the?
I mean, it's going to save us money, so I'm confused as to why we don't.
Now, this is when we can speak up.
I was thinking if we go month to month, I was thinking about going 18 months of temporary for fire facilities and 12 months for police. And then go month to month to save a little money.
I, I still don't understand why we've never looked at putting the police in this building that's only 40% occupied.
The fourth floor is packed. It's not empty. Have you toured it?
Yeah, yes, I have.
It's packed.
I've toured it.
It's not an empty floor, so I'm not sure where we would put them.
Okay, so if I call for a roll, that it should be a done deal, right?
You should do public comment.
I had done public comment.
I'm sorry. And then you'll call for a roll, and that'll be that?
Okay, so I call for a roll.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Nay.
Commissioner Suzanne?
No.
And then as mayor?
No, the motion fails.
Motion fails, 2-2.
I move to approve the city manager to enter into a contract with Wal Scott, Inc. for $337,938 to provide 18 months of temporary fire department facilities and 12 months of temporary police department facilities.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Could someone repeat the motion again, please?
I move to approve the city manager to enter into a contract with Will Scott, Inc. for $337,938 to provide 18 months of temporary fire department facilities and 12 months of temporary police department facilities. And we had a second by Commissioner Vasquez.
I'm just trying to, to figure out the, the logic on it.
So we know we need 18 months of temporary fire department facilities, as we won't have a facility built in 18 months. If we do 12 months of the temporary police department facilities, and then we figure out what our end game is, because we don't know where the police and fire department are to go. We haven't really decided on a true location, although it's been discussed putting it next door here at this parking lot. Both chiefs have mentioned that that would lose parking revenue, and then other locations were discussed. So if we did 12 months of temporary police department facilities and then figure out what we're going to do, we could cancel the temporary police facilities and then keep fire facilities moving forward. That was my logic.
One in the same. So how do you need fire less than, I mean, need police less time than fire? I think that's...
I mean, just like Commissioner Clark said, what if it went into the fourth floor or other things? I don't know. We're, we're waiting for money. We might, we're looking to get money from the state and so on.
I mean, yeah, it's been my understanding that we're waiting to find out if we get the money or not. And if we don't, I don't know where that puts us.
But even if we do, even if they rebuild what they have, they have to have a home. And they don't have a home. They have leaky trailers that are costing us more than this contract.
And that's why we extend month to month if we need to. That was my logic on that.
I mean, if we don't get the money, I don't understand why we would not put them in this building. And I know there's, there's people that, you know, say there isn't room, and people that say there is. I don't see why there's not room. I don't see how that's not supporting the police if they are in this nice building. I just don't, I don't get it.
I've received a couple calls on this, so I know I need to do what's best for the city, and I think this is what's best. So that's my personal...
And this building isn't hurricane-proof, just for the record. It's not fortified. So putting a police facility, once again, in a non-fortified hurricane building is senseless, because you're not going to save, and I know we're not here to debate this, but you're not going to save half the money by putting the police elsewhere. It's not going to cost half the cost. So I just, to put the police station, it's, to me, it's like making them not as important. They're all first responders that need to be in a fortified building that's hurricane-proof.
It's really not about the amount of time. It's about where they're going to be located.
And we know they're not going to be rebuilt or built in 18 months. Neither one of them. So it's going to end up costing the taxpayers more by not doing the full, but we have to do one of them, because they need a place to stay.
Well, we can't leave them in the situation at order today.
Nope.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but do we call a roll call on this?
Yep, call roll.
Who is the second?
Real quick, real quick, before we call roll. If this motion dies...
Yes.
Can this be brought back up on the 27th, once again, when our fifth commissioner is here?
Yes, you could bring this up. There's a reconsideration provision within your rules with regard to this.
I think that's how it's going to go.
I'm sorry, who seconded the Commissioner Suzanne's motion?
It was Commissioner Vasquez was the second.
Thank you. Commissioner Suzanne?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
No.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
No.
We just make sure that, well, that would be you that would have to.
Yeah, with the special meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's, let's move on. Treasure Island Historical Society City Hall Project.
Good evening. As you might recall, city man, former city manager Amy Davis had coordinated with the Treasure Island Historical Society to provide wall wraps for City Hall. There were five wall wraps, one in the chamber, two on the second floor, and two on the fifth floor. They are ready to proceed with the fifth-floor design, the one opposite the elevator. According to Barbara Driscoll, the president of the Treasure Island Historical Society, this design is more whimsical, because she feels that it's a more active public space with the activities and the rentals we have. And they try to incorporate a lot of elements of Treasure Island, as well as the local neighborhoods, by putting their names on the directional signs. So just commission consensus as to whether or not you want to proceed with the design.
Any questions for?
You're going to think I'm really fussy. I love it. It's adorable. It absolutely drives me crazy that the street signs aren't facing the right way.
It did me, too, and then I tried to get over that. I did notice they're not going in the right direction whatsoever.
Pretty going that way.
I didn't pay attention to that.
I did. And we can see if they change them, but I don't, well, they had something else, too, and I had them change, because they had put, I think John's Pass and something else, and I said, that's not Treasure Island. So I've already changed the signs once, so I can ask them to try to put them in somehow.
It's my OCD kicking in. I'm sorry.
Mine, too. Yeah, that's, I can get with them on that. It seems like a...
Other than that, I think it's adorable. I love it.
All right.
To proceed with those changes?
Is this one that we would call for public comment?
You can, but you're going to give consensus direction, but there's no harm in calling for public comment.
Okay, do we have any public comment? Okay, seeing none. What we need is consensus on the, the fifth-floor wall design, as requested to, by the commission.
And to make sure the directional signs are as best as they can be.
Do we have consensus on moving direction? I see heads shaking, yes. So yes, we do. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And I'm taking this other magazine. I keep collecting them, because we have standing ovations in the catalog, so.
Okay, our next item of business, hurricanes, Helene and Milton after-action review. And Chief, you're going to, our city manager, you're going to be taking this one, correct?
All right, I was supposed to have a PowerPoint. Dominique, can you cue that up? And I can get started while that's coming up. So in, in 2024, as we all know, the city was impacted by three hurricanes, Debbie, Helene, and Milton. Our emergency operations center was activated for all three storms, as was, and was the primary location for deployment of city staff and external resources for hurricane, for external resources that we had come in post-hurricane. Post-event, staff began an ongoing after-action review to determine what was effective during our preparation, response, and recovery operations, and what areas we could improve going forward. This after-action report is a 360-degree look, which we talked about earlier, at our emergency management operations, and considers all stakeholders' input. And as we prepare for the beginning of this year's hurricane season on June 1, staff continues to work towards implementing the identified changes in our planning. the identified changes in our planning and improve our current capabilities to meet the needs of residents and business holders on Treasure Island. So I don't have the PowerPoint up, apparently. I have it here. I can kind of go through it a little bit. Let me just set it up to run.
Here they come.
So that's queuing up. I can actually, a little bit out of order, but it'll make sense. The PowerPoint is mostly talking about some of those other resources in a brief, like an education and organizational flowchart so that everyone's on the same page. That was one of the things we realized that although we've had staff taking the incident management, emergency management coursework, basic EOC operations and that type of thing for years, when we actually go to implement it, there's a gap between the knowledge that you get in the classroom and real world experience. I can take some, oh, thank you. What a team effort by staff. I love it. I could take some responsibility for that, just having come up through incident management and emergency management operations. Chief Barkley and I are very familiar with it, and we just probably made a few too many assumptions that the resource ordering process, how things flow from the state to the, from FEMA to the state, to the county, to the municipalities was understood. So we're looking at correcting all that, and the PowerPoint here will give us a little bit of a walkthrough. And it's fairly short. It's only five slides. But the way the emergency management network works is of all disasters, we have a saying, all disasters are local. So everything happens at the local level when you hit, obviously the boots on the ground. And all disasters are also unique. They have a saying, if you've been through a hurricane, you've been through one hurricane. They're not all the same. That's, Chief Barkley loves that one. So, excuse me, you learn on all of them. If we look over to the, to the right side of this slide, the state emergency operations center, there's someone on duty at the watch desk there 24/7/365, and they manage things from plane crashes to hospital evacuations due to air-conditioned failures, flooding, hurricanes, any type of disaster, hazardous materials releases. They're there for locals to call upon to get resources when we need them. A lot of what we do is just notification, but in this case, we activated the state emergency response plan. That was done by the governor. The EMAC, which is the Emergency Management Assistant Compact, Assistance Compact, that is when we bring in resources from outside the state of Florida. We did that on Helene when we did our search, our urban search and rescue. We had teams in from, we had a Miami team, but we also had Texas and Oklahoma here in our region. We had teams from Vermont and all over the country in here, swift water teams for the fast-moving floodwaters. So in my career, honestly, that's the first time I've received aid from EMAC and state mutual aid resources. I've been out seven or eight times for wildfires, hurricanes, disasters. It's a whole different ballgame when you're receiving the aid. A steep learning curve for sure. So municipalities can also contract their own resources. We piggybacked on a contract, several, three actually, our public works department did, with the county for debris management. And those are contracts that have been pre-negotiated so that we're able to get our FEMA reimbursement grant money at the end. You have to procure them correctly. We can't just run out and grab a guy with a dump truck and have him come haul our debris. So all this is pre-planned. The sites where we put the debris, the soil has to be pre-tested on an annual basis. There is just a ton of requirements to this. And this we knew and this we had done. Nothing new for us, but just to speak to the complexity of it at the state requirement level, they're the point of contact for FEMA. So our governor actually requests through the FEMA director, the president declare a disaster. So that's how that works. And then all those resources come through the state. FROC is a program, the Florida, re, yes, I forget. It's, it's the Florida Division of Emergency Management, and it basically is a program that we've participated in now for two years, and it allows us to pre-identify those contracts that we have. And they basically go through and look at, it's about a 36-page document where they ask us a bunch of questions, how we mitigate, how we prepare, how we're going to respond and recover. They look at all of our pre-positioned contracts, what resources we have, what staff we have, what is our ability to augment staff for gray sky operations, and they give us a grade on that. Currently, we're sitting somewhere around the 50%, which means that we will get 50% of our potentially obligated FEMA reimbursement within a couple of weeks post-storm. Director Guthrie from Florida Division of Emergency Management put this program into place two years ago, and we've improved every year in our percentage. So it's an ongoing progress or process with a lot of work from staff, but it's something we continue to work towards, towards improving. The middle one is, the middle bullet there is the county EOC. That's our point of contact. They receive all the state resources. For example, on the fireside, the state will bring in 25 engine strike teams. That's five, five fire engines and a leader, like a battalion chief. They'll bring in 25 of those and they'll stage them at the Orlando Convention Center for a hurricane on the coast. County calls up and says, yeah, we're going to need probably 10 engine strike teams, and they will pre-position those at the fairgrounds in Tampa for us.
You want me to go into a little bit of minutia this? You want me to go into a little bit of minutia? When, give your, give your voice a break for a second. This is how it looks, and it looks all pretty and perfect and tied up in a bow. And then you have all sorts of different, like when Trip says, and my favorite expression is, when you've been through a hurricane, you've been through a hurricane. There are so many different variables here, especially when you're requesting resources. What type of storm is it? You remember Helene paralleled the Florida coast, and they had storm surge from Naples all the way up to the Big Bend. So you're talking every waterfront community between Naples and the Big Bend was affected by storm surge. And it got worse as you get further north as that storm was strengthening and made its jog into the state. The county EOC tries to take care of all of your needs. And depending on the type of storm, like Helene was different because it was literally just the barrier islands in Pinellas County and the east part of the, the east part of the county. Milton, completely different. I mean, we had areas flood in Milton that are in non-flood zones. So it all depends on what type of storm, where it's going. I cheated a little bit after Helene. I called my contacts in Miami-Dade County before the state released resources, and that's why the guys from the city Miami, Coral Gables and Miami Beach were up here so quickly. Miami-Dade does things a little bit differently. They say, we're going to deploy and then we'll figure out that paperwork later, which is much appreciative. And they took care of us until Milton came and then everything was more settled. And then the Palm Beach County police chiefs took over and did that. But I knew, I knew it was coming, so I pretty much called ahead, basically. And that's what happens. It all depends, the type of storm. Milton was different than Helene. Resources are scarce. There's only so much around. And getting them to you, it's great to request it, but sometimes it takes a while. I know we still have resource requests in there for CDD that has still not been filled up to this day, and we are eight months past the storm. So just keep that in mind as it's going on. Did it just affect us? Did it affect everybody? Remember, Milton had an interesting effect because it spawned more tornadoes in Florida in, in history in one storm, in which all of a sudden affected the east coast of Florida with all the tornado activity, so.
Good point. And, and those resources, when they do come to us locally, it's our responsibility to determine a strategy and deploy those resources. Excuse me. So, seems to have gotten out of order. I apologize. This wasn't the PowerPoint that I had. I think maybe we get to a different version, but we can work with it. So. So our after-action review process here in city of Treasure Island, we wanted to look at the response and the preparedness, you know, what we did right and could do better, and then the recovery as well. We annually do a comprehensive emergency plan review. So that's something that each department looks at, our continuity of government plan, and look at our resource deficits, anything we know we're going to need. For example, community development, you know, I apologize, I'm getting over a chest cold. Community development needed folks to do the permitting after the fact, and that's one of the things we learned that we're going to need to reach out and ask for earlier. Our EOC location was threatened this year by flooding, predicted floods, so we had to evacuate to an EOC farther away, which it hampered operations a little bit. We've been able to renew that contract this year, so we have access to that building again. There's also some construction going on at our primary EOC, so we may lose that facility towards the end of season, which is the most active. So we have made contingency plans for that. And then our staff, especially with new staff leadership coming on at the director level, we've taken a really hard look at our staff deployment model, and we're trying to pre-identify needs in every department and do resource request forms to, to kind of build out what the gray sky organization would look like different from the blue sky. What would normally, you know, we doing fence and pool and whatever else permitting we do. We now know what's coming after, after we get it again. So we can build out to that capacity ahead of time. Ordering an incident management team up was one of the better things we did. We had folks from the other COs come over who specialize in emergency management. Excuse me. We had logistics and planning sections stood up. We produced incident action plans that are, they were 15 and 20 pages long. They specified each day's workload, who was doing what, what the organizational structure was for the day, depending on who was on duty. Those are paying dividends today as we, as Mike files for reimbursement for the FEMA grants. That's backup documentation that we need to get that money back. So definitely something we'll do again, for sure. As I mentioned before, we put the resident and business survey out. We're looking to get results from that side of the equation as well, you know, hear what we can do better from the folks we serve. We're doing a policy and planning review, department to department, and staff is looking at which, which specialized FEMA courses for emergency management would fit into each department to help us get better prepared going forward. So again, I apologize that the PowerPoint's in a different version on this computer, I guess. So it's, it's not as pretty as it should be, but all the info is there. We keep in mind that our comprehensive emergency plan is an all-hazards plan. So regardless of what happens, be it man-made, natural disaster, active shooter-type event, this will allow for continuity of government and, and it's kind of, makes sure staff has a pre-scripted, basically a loose plan. We know the plan never survives first contact with the enemy, but it gives us, you know, a fallback to where we implement the pieces that we can and then work on getting what we need to implement the rest of it. So that can include, like you see here, a pre-scripted mission request. I've directed all the department directors to, to make those assessments in their departments and then fill out the ICS 213 resource request forms. And we're just going to keep those in a stack. And when we get into the cone of another storm or another disaster coming, we'll evaluate which ones we're going to need, and those go right to the county EOC. We get in line first before all the other cities, hopefully, and can get some of those state resources sent here to Treasure Island. We would bring in incident management teams and our Florida Division of Emergency Management FEMA specialists earlier. That, the specialists that, that FDM sent us and continue to have on staff is making a big difference. Happy to report, we're in phase two. I want to say there's 13 or 14 phases, but we're in phase two with all of our projects. So we are moving along. It is just a process. Talked about the up-staffing already a little bit. Public Works is going to do things a little differently. They're going to work two shifts with staffing augmentation. So they can split their folks and better have fresh rested personnel ready to go out on the street at the beginning of each 12-hour shift period. Again, and then we're going to reevaluate the debris management, piggyback contracts, make sure we have those in place and ready to go. Just a couple of the planning documents. These, this is, you know, generic photos, but we didn't want to put these out for public review because they are our planning documents for man-made intentional terrorism-type events. So they're not exactly public, publicly available. Happy to share them with the commissioners individually if you like, but the comprehensive emergency management plan is laid out, again, as a continuity of government operation. And then there's annexes for each depart, each department. So those function specifically to their responsibilities, how we can best get back from, from disaster back to blue sky operations. You'll see a spreadsheet up there. We've actually, I don't know if you can see it, the detail, but we've broken down three days pre-storm to three, three to four days post-storm. And then for departments like community development that have a longer role, by week after that. So we kind of know who's in what role or, or what position is in what role, and we can better identify gaps there. So we put out situation reports. We relay information from the county as well, make sure that all of our residents are getting the same message. Our PIO is integral into that, and as are our commissioners, to get out in your districts and make sure those social media posts are correct and tamp down any, any rumors that are incorrect and just not in the public good. So we make sure you have with a daily situation report that's coordinated by our PIO, the latest and greatest, most correct information, so everyone is on the same page. All right. And it's just a little bit of some of the coursework that are, we currently, we have been doing and we're working on getting as we, we turn over staff the different, different courses. The ICS 300 and ICS 400, those are three-day courses. That's intermediate and then advanced incident, or advanced emergency operations for expanding incidents. You know, we just, we require that of at least somebody on duty at the EOC at all times, various levels of staggered training as you go down the org chart. But we want everyone to know that there's a process and a system for, for getting resources, for deploying resources, basically for the whole response. It's spelled out in the National Incident Management Plan, and we adhere to that as best we can with our, our limited resources and size. So, and John, feel free to jump in here if you want.
Yeah, I was just going to, I want to emphasize, I mean, we took a hard look internally, you know, what went right, what went wrong. A lot of the stuff that went wrong was public, and, you know, we've taken steps to make sure that's not going to happen again. And what happens after events like this, all of a sudden you become the experts. You don't want to be, but all of a sudden you're an expert. I've already spoken on four different panels around the state of Florida to new police chiefs, telling them, you know, what can happen, how bad it can get, you know, talking about leadership and, and planning and, and all the other things. And what you would be very, very proud of are the unsung heroes. There are a lot of unsung heroes, a lot of the employees during the storm, a lot of them who had damage to their own personal homes, including myself, that were at work every day. I never heard the phrase, not my job. Everybody was stamping up to do things, you know, in the best interest of Treasure Island, getting things as close to running right as possible. Mayor Dr., I know you were involved in that. You were a commissioner then. And just for the three commissioners that are new, you, you would be proud of city staff and how they stepped up and worked. And I've heard comments, you know, unfortunately, oh, well, they don't live here, so they don't care about us. And that, it couldn't be further from the truth. I was, every day I'd walked into work and, you know, and I'm dealing with personal things and on a professional level and everything else. And inspiring me seeing how everybody was putting their nose to the grindstone and working as hard as possible, you know, spending time on Sunset Beach, you know, those mounds and mounds and mountains of sand on the side of... on the side of the road that looked like a blizzard just hit, you know, and seeing homes that were rocked off their foundations. It's mentally exhausting for people to see that, and to see the employees step up and, I mean, my police officers and the visiting police officers were delivering water to people. They're talking to people in their front yards because they just wanted to talk. But for as many things that went wrong, a lot more things went right, and, you know, we're going to, I think we're going to be setting the standard from here on out for storms, because we have two different storms 10 days apart and two entirely different types of storms too.
Yep, and I'll just run down a quick list of, and it's, just so you all know, it's one, it's eight pages front and back of suggested items for improvement from staff. So currently, you know, working on these things, some of them are more labor-intensive than others, but even little things that we noticed that we can do better. So, not that we did anything poorly, excuse me, but, you know, and I'll go through just a list, I highlighted just a few of them, the more pertinent ones, so you can see, just get an idea or feel for what we're, your staff is doing to be even better. So we would definitely order the incident management team ahead of time. We need to coordinate better with PCSO, that's the sheriff's office, and urban search and rescue assets, the sheriff controls those when they come in. We actually had a meeting yesterday on water rescue assets, and police, sheriff, and fire all throughout the county are going to work together. And those are the, those are for the folks that decide not to evacuate and then call during the height of the storm. While we never recommend that, we will do our best to come get you. We may or may not, but we're coordinating those resources in a different way for the upcoming season. Volunteer coordinator earlier, for sure. Tertiary EOC agreement with St. Pete College, that's done. State-ordered resources first. This saves invoicing and reimbursement on the back end, so if the state sends something that they've already ordered, we'll use that before we use our contract stuff, just to try and save, be fiscally responsible. Damage assessment must be contracted by the city with an assessor and set a date to have the data returned to the city. I know that's a big one, that's going to make sure we're a lot more responsive on the back end this coming, next time. Incident action plans, we'll preset the objectives to the best of our ability. Specific requests, when we have National Guard in, their services were great, but they're constrained by their orders, so we have to, we learned, that was a big point for us, we have to make sure that those orders include loading, unloading, security, directing civilians, bringing a forklift, traffic control. Otherwise, you know, we can't use that resource to the best of its highest purpose.
Did you know that they request police for security for the National Guard?
Yeah.
I'm not kidding.
True.
Really?
Yeah. So, yeah, they have first push teams, which are great, those are teams that push the debris off the road so we can get back in. We're going to stage some of those at our EOC. Planning for alternative transportation vehicles ahead of time, that's something staff had to work really hard to do, to get the residents in and out of Sunset Beach after the fact. We can preorder those golf carts side-by-sides and utility vehicles, make it a lot easier to do that. Setting the public expectations on timelines ahead of and during the incident, you know, like, when are we going to be starting that damage assessment? When will we be opening for permits, what the overall process is? We realize we could do a better job on communication with that, so something we'll definitely do. Compiling volunteer lists and coordination ahead of time. Damage assessments, we're thinking we'll rent small pickup trucks in advance, that way we can store them at the EOC. CDD personnel can get back here and start on those immediately. So in the finance department, we're going to do project codes to set up for proper tracking and submissions on the back end. Review all deadlines with respect to possible grant dollars. Continue to raise our FROC store and provide more robust policies and purchasing policies to deal with emergency purchases as needed during the event. Well, one of the things we would like to come to commission for ahead of time is determining any permitting discounts upfront, so we don't have to go through the refund process if this is something we want to do, you know, to make a standard post-storm, we can do that. That way we make the announcement ahead of time and nobody's paying the fee upfront and then trying to struggle to get reimbursed. Identify some short-term loan capital sources or reserves, you know, to see how we're going to get through the fiscally constrained part of the event. Emphasizing remote work for our employees who can do so. Letting folks be productive at home, so we don't have to feed them when there's no place to get food on the island, or we don't have office space with air conditioning up and running yet. So we can still get productivity while they're at home, providing the tools necessary to do the duties from home. We'll do that by strengthening our cloud-based systems, accelerating the transition to a fully cloud-based system for record security and accessibility. That is in progress as we speak. Streaming logistics, improving coordination for food and supplies distribution in support of the EOC teams, first responders, and partners. That was a Herculean effort, getting those food trucks in here, that was all arranged by city staff. We had to feed our workers, we had to make sure citizens had a place and residents who were returning to check on their damaged property could get the basic necessities that they need. I mean, I could go on and on, but you kind of get the gist of it. I've got four more pages of these, I don't want to bore you. But those are some of the hard things that we looked at, and we're working through solutions and vow, you know, we were happy with our performance, we really were. It was uncharted territory for us. Some may say that we didn't do the best we could in recovery, but we did the best we could. We were learning as we were flying the airplane, we were building it, we were actually reading the instruction manual for how to build an airplane while we were flying it. So we do realize there were gaps and there's room for improvement, and we vow to, as a staff, to make those improvements. And I'll pause here for questions.
That's impressive lessons learned with everything that's been going on and considering, you know, just what you guys are working with on your everyday. That's very, very impressive lessons learned and just in the ones that you mentioned, I would love to see that list. But just what you mentioned is definitely valid, and I think you guys did an incredible job, especially considering it hasn't happened here. I mean, we had, to what you said, I was here the day after the hurricane pulling stuff out of my house, and I had Miami Dade officers on my street every 10 minutes, I believe they were out there, along with our own. So I have to say, I think you guys did an excellent job, especially being that you were reading the manual as you were going, but I think it was great, but that's awesome that you put it together. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I have full faith in you two chiefs to, I think you did a great job on this, and I think you'll do even better. God forbid this happens again. I know you missed in a couple things around, it sounded like with damage assessments and permitting type things. I guess I just want to make sure that we've done a deep dive around the permitting process, because I'll be honest, as bad as this was, I think one of the most traumatic things for most of the residents was not being able to get back into their home, all of the hubbub around the permitting. So, I mean, are we comfortable that if this happens again, we can hit the ground running on permitting and get people back into their homes as soon as possible?
I do, and I think we now know the right questions to ask, what we come to you with to ask permission to do, get those extra resources staffed up front. I feel like we were ready for the normal permitting, but this was far from normal. So, you know, the permitting department is also, their first priority when they get back on the island is damage assessment. That's, we do what's called a windshield survey or initial damage assessment. That's where those little pickup trucks would come in. They basically drive around and determine the scope of the disaster, so we can report back, and this is typically four, six, eight hours post-landfall, as long as it's light. We need to have a report back to the county, so they can start funneling those state resources or shipping them somewhere else in the state where they're needed. That's the initial damage assessment or windshield survey. After that, we'll do a deeper look, pretty much by block, to look at impacted, damaged, destroyed-type situation, and try to get a count on the number of structures that are in each category, report that back. That will quantify the state's request for national disaster declaration to the president. They put a dollar value on that, so that's a priority. And then after that, the preliminary damage assessment, which actually comes after the initial, which is weird, but it's the way FEMA does it. The preliminary is FEMA's preliminary, where they send folks down, our CDD staff goes out and shows them what we found on that damage assessment, and they give it the thumbs up, or eh, not quite what you said. That's what triggers the money, the federal resources starting to flow. So that's probably their first four days. After that, we can start getting into permitting, and we now know, again, the questions to ask for that.
And I think what's really important is, you know, when Assistant Chief Brennan got in there and said, "Let's look at our process," and once he got in there and walked through the process and refined the process, that's when we really hit the ground running, and I think that's when we hit our stride. So that's going to be the base point now. You know, the trud, there's other stuff that we went through that two, three, four months before that, prior to that, you know, it was a hit and miss, hit and misses, isn't working. You know, what's the most efficient and effective, my two favorite words? And finally, when Deputy Chief Brennan went in there, went through the process and started to hone it and say, "Okay, let's do this," and had the different teams, we were much, much more effective and able to put out a lot more permits.
If I can add just one thing? I also just wanted to make you aware of the fact that the legislature did pass Senate Bill 180. It's a bill that deals specifically with emergencies and the recovery, and just a couple items, I mean, I don't believe the governor has signed, I'm not even sure if the bill's been sent to him yet, but certainly he'll be receiving it if he hasn't already soon. And if it goes, if it is approved and goes on, it'll come into effect on July 1st. But some of the items that it handled were debris haulers. So one of the issues that we had was that while we had contracts with debris haulers, then the state had contracts with debris haulers, and there was this whole issue of whether they're coming here or they're going somewhere else where they can get a higher bid, a higher price, under an existing contract. So that issue is addressed in this bill. There's also training for all municipal and county staff with regard to this, which is addressed in the bill. There are special building permits and inspections that have to be developed and that are also addressed in this bill. And then there's additional personnel and how, what your plan is for that, and how, and that's also addressed in this bill. So there are several of the items that you all have talked about and said is of concern that are in this bill that the staff will, once, assuming it passes on July 1st, need to look at and then incorporate into their emergency procedures.
And we're aware of that and spoke to it when we were up on the Capitol as the Fire Chiefs Association. There's also some postings required on the website, communicate, it does a good job of making sure everyone is informed of what the plan and the process is. So we heartily support that, we hope the governor signs it, and we're pretty much in compliance already. The other items, like the up-staffing, we'll get there.
It's turning a lot of the lessons learned into best practices, and you learn that through, I mean, the state of Florida has been through what has been through in the last five years, and everybody's been contributing at Fort Myers Beach, Sanibel, you know, Perry, and us, you know, we're all, we're a part of that now, we're part of the change.
All right. Now, this was an update. With an update, would we normally do a public comment?
Again, you certainly can, it's up to you as to whether or not you want an update or a public comment on the update.
Mr. Bazo?
Hi, Robert Bazo, District 1, Isle of Capri. I would like to preface my comments by saying, in terms of the report out, the city manager report, that's what we want to hear, the topic report that he gave out. As a lot of you know, I have a background in emergency management, and I was director of the operations center. And I've said before that I thought what was necessary was a lesson learned and an action review. I understand that we are small and we have limited manpower, I understand, and it's professional discipline, I understand, and we really couldn't do that. I did read the PowerPoint slide that was online, it was informative. Not surprising that Police and Fire Department are ahead of the pack, they're trained in incident command, incident management, they have all the courses, and they do very well. There are many facets of disaster response and disaster management, and certainly response, I think we did really well. I mean, really well. And again, we have two great chiefs here, did a fantastic job, and I mentioned to Chief Bartley that his manner and procedures to get the, to get other police forces here through the impact, the compact, should be the template we used. He was able to get a lot of forces here very quickly. Fire Department did as well, unbelievable. So, I mean, aces for that. But there's other parts of disaster management, recovery and mitigation, I think we did not so great. Now, recovery involves getting the community back to pre-disaster status. It includes electricity, includes sewer, wastewater, and we did, we did a good job. I mean, we were open for business fairly quickly. But a big part of recovery is getting people back in their homes, and I don't think we did a really good job in that. So I would like the two chiefs to really work with the other department heads and have them do the incident command structure system and use the incident management system to build those manpower packages now that we can send out to the county and the state quickly. Commissioner Clark talked about permitting. I think on day, on day one, we should have immediately a package that goes out to get a, to get a emergency manager, a certified emergency manager here, and a full roadmap of qualified permit people, engineers and builders. So then D plus, let's say, 10 or 12, we're able to start doing permits. Option two, option one, we discussed that, we know option two is the way to go. The chief talked about emphasizing structural damage. I don't think that's really the way to go. Again, we talked about the normal permit process, I think works, especially when there isn't a lot of substantial damage. Most of our damage was water, a limited water, sheet rock and things like that, electrical. We're never going to be substantially damaged at that point in time. So I'll, using these two chiefs' experience and knowledge, helping the other departments build those personnel packages now, augmentation, that's going to be fully funded and fully reimbursable, we should do that now. And I'm really proud of our Police and Fire Department, and I think they set the standard for emergency management, and I've worked a lot at the federal level, and I think these two guys really stand out. And I think we did an okay job in terms of getting the community back to things like electricity and power and water, but we didn't do a great job in getting people back to their homes, and we still don't have people back in their homes. So I think we need to work on that, and I think these two individuals here can really set the standard for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can just, if I can just add to that in between, it's, I think it's very important for everybody to know that this is not the end of the storms, we're still in recovery mode, we're going to be in recovery mode probably for a few years. It's, I don't think it's realistic for anybody to think, "Well, we just went through that, you know, in six months we're flipping a switch and we're good to go." I mean, you've seen Fort Myers Beach, Sanibel Island, stuff like, they're still in recovery mode, and, you know, we're the same here. Everybody's fighting over contractors and building supplies and getting their stuff done. So we're very well aware of the fact that this is, this is a non-going disaster that we're still in, and we're reminded every day when we, we're in our temporary facilities too.
And I think that what's different than what happened down Lee County is that FEMA did not stay as long in a community. They left on April 8th, and that was tough, because everybody expected them to be there for at least nine months to a year, and all of a sudden, you know, the funds were cut off and we were done.
And you see, you know, even with Helene, the national spotlight was off of us two days later when the homes started going down the river in North Carolina.
Right.
You know, and it's, and one of the unsung heroes here was Jason Beisel, our PIO, because he had, I know I did interviews on national TV, National Weather Services, AccuWeather, Weather Channel, to keep our face out there and keep our message out there for our people. Weather Channel, to keep our face out there and keep our message out there for our people.
Sarah, you'll be next.
Hi, Sarah Pennington, Isle of Palms. Outside of the permitting issue, I just want to mention something that I feel like might seem small but has not been discussed. I think it's awesome, and I greatly appreciate that we have police up at the causeway checking IDs of people coming onto the island, and I think that is very, very important. One thing that I experienced, though, after the storm, and it was very upsetting, is Wes and I, we actually walked to our house from the causeway, because we were just so desperate to get to our home, and they weren't allowing cars onto the island, which I understand, because maybe there could be some dangerous situations where they weren't sure if people could drive on with cars yet, and I understand that. But even the next day, we did the same thing, which, by the way, Arthur, you and your wife gave us a ride. We flagged him down at Triangle Park and got a ride the last couple blocks to our house. So, thank you for that. But what was upsetting to me was the second day of people having to walk onto the island, we had the bus from Treasure Island out, and it was giving people rides off the island to the causeway, but they would not give anyone a ride from the causeway onto the island. And I saw so many elderly people in tears, trying to walk to their homes from the causeway, because they were so desperate to get back on, and our buses were driving empty onto the island, and then filling up with people to drive to the end of the causeway. And so, I would like to make a suggestion that next time, if we're going to be running buses, if people are walking, they should be picked up from the causeway and dropped off at maybe each neighborhood, not necessarily in front of their home, but somewhere where it's safe to bring them on, because it was pretty terrible to see all the elderly people having to make that walk. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I can address that briefly, if you like. Just, we were still under evacuation. We did not want to bring people onto the island with unknown electrical wires that hadn't, we had no power, we had no ability to pump sewer. The idea was to keep people off the island. We couldn't stop them if they wanted to walk on, but we just felt it wasn't safe to encourage people coming back on the island at that point by giving them a ride.
Thank you.
Hello, District 3. Just to piggyback on what Ms. Pennington said, I did walk over and walk to the house, and it was good that there was people there checking IDs, which was fabulous. The only problem I had was, after a couple of days, that was done. I mean, I was at our house, we were working, putting stuff out at the curb, and you had people who did not live on the island, in and going through all of our stuff out in front. I mean, that is, it's heartbreaking enough to see your stuff out there, but then to have people come that don't even live here, go through your stuff. I get it that it's garbage, and that's what the one officer said. It's out at the curb, it's garbage. But coming from, it's hard to do that. So, keep people out that don't live here. Keep them out. Let us go and do what we need to do for our own houses, but keep people who don't live here out of the town for a while, until they can start picking up the stuff and getting out. Because that was very heartbreaking to see all your stuff sitting there and people going through all your stuff. That's one thing that I would like to have done, just to keep people who don't live on the island. Everybody has their emergency pass who lives here. If they don't have an emergency pass or a license that states a street address in Treasure Island, they shouldn't be allowed on. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can absolutely address that, and I feel your pain. Same thing was going, people are going through the stuff in my front yard of my own home. When it is out of the curb, it is garbage, but I understand what you're talking about. Access to Treasure Island is in three different points, and we only control one point of entry. That was a county-wide decision, and if we would not, at that time, have allowed cars and people on there, then everybody would have been screaming at us that they have a mitigation company ready to go work on their house, and we wouldn't let them. We don't, we didn't use the passes at the island here. I don't believe in the passes personally. I know they have them countywide, and I'll tell you why. On Sanibel Island, there were passes were abused. Sanibel Island had a record number of home burglaries by people with passes that were allowed on Sanibel Island, because people were giving them to their contractors, and some of the laborers and stuff working with the contractors decided to burglarize other homes on Sanibel Island. So, we checked and made sure people were business owners or residents of Treasure Island before we let them on. But at a certain point, we coordinate with the Sheriff's Office, City of Clearwater, and us to make sure that we are good to go with, on the island. As soon as it's safe for vehicular traffic, we have to let people on there, so people can start to get building supplies and secure their homes and start working in mitigation in their homes. That's why that decision was made. It's never perfect, and I don't, I've never worked in evacuation where everything goes perfectly, and that decision to let people back on is never popular. There's nothing worse than being a police officer, where you're standing at a checkpoint telling somebody they can't go to their home, and that's why we allowed foot traffic on there, and that was a decision we made. We can't, we couldn't allow them to drive their cars in there, because it was unsafe. We still had power lines down. We had homes all over the island in different states of repair. And you remember, when we opened it up, we still kept Sunset Beach shut down because of the amount of damage in Sunset Beach. So, we kind of gradually opened the city as we were able to. That's never, never an easy decision.
Thank you, Chief.
And those passes are easily duplicated, and I've seen a lot of duplicated passes.
Mary Ellen, did you want to?
Hi, I'm Mary Ellen Huer. I come all the time. I slow to speak. I live in Serena Bay, which is right over here on 108th Avenue. We had people that chose not to leave. They also chose, when the storm came, to take the elevators downstairs. Then the electricity went off. We are paying in excess in one of the buildings, in the building I live in, everybody left. In the building next door, people didn't leave. They had a hurricane party or something. They came down with the elevator, the electricity went off. It is costing us all over $51,000 in repair. It could have been more of a tragedy if someone had been hurt. I don't know what we could do to get people to leave, but I think it's very important that people hear these stories, because many, many bad things could have happened in that situation. And I'm sure we are not the only condominium that had things like that happen.
Thank you. All right. I think we'll close the public comment, and we'll move on to our last item of the evening, which is permit review. And Mike, if you'll join us?
Oh, here we go. This will be fast. A couple of weeks ago, we came and asked to get some additional staff. Highlighted on the 5th of May, we had 217 permits in review, and then 12th, it was 243. And then this past week, it was down to 202. Now, I'll say, one data point is not a trend, but a trend starts with one data point. So, we're on the right track. And again, we'll continue to monitor it week by week. Okay. A question came up about inspection, so we pulled some numbers the last few weeks. These are the number of requests, the number of building, requests coming in to do building inspections, and we're running in the neighborhood of about roughly 230 over the last, last four weeks. And again, we'll continue to monitor that. And just so you know, it's not just regular building permits that we do. This is a breakdown of the permits by type. Obviously, the orange one there is the building permits that we're all familiar with, but you can see there's an excess of 300 plus 200 plus 400. You can see there's any number of other building permits that the city is responsible for in addition to the norm. Refunds, everybody's favorite subject. This is how we're tracking so far. To date, we've got planned in production now about 342 permits to go out by the end of June. We'll, we're working to get that number higher, obviously. We've got about 616 to go, highlighted by the green, and so, right now, the grand total is about 470, call it $475,000 that we'll be refunding when all is said and done. Our goal is to average about 50 a week, if we can. Again, we have, like, limited resources to do this, and, you know, we're running, well, we're running very hard. I was going to say something inappropriate, but, so anyway, that's it. Again, I've made a commitment, we're going to report to you every week or every meeting on our progress, good, bad, or indifferent, or ugly. We're going to report it and give you our status. Any questions?
Don't believe so. So, thank you.
One last point, we did get a check in for $600,000.
Oh, good.
Nice to see you. That's an insurance check?
Yeah.
Great. And we'll probably see the ordinance on that upcoming.
I tried to squeeze it in for tonight, but, you know.
Okay. Great, thank you. And does anybody, public comment? Does anybody have anything? Okay, great. We're adjourned.